Good afternoon, my colleagues. We have returned. The Committee of the Whole is back in order. We have one last amendment introduced by Senator Frank Blas. Senator Blas?
So moved, Mr. Chair. Oh, you want me to repeat it again? Sir, there's amendment that I prefer is going to go on, I guess, page two. And it's to add a new subsection 90.300A4 to the bill to read for the purposes of this act, indigent inmates or indigent detainees shall mean those persons charged in a criminal case before the Courts of Guam who are determined indigent consistent with toll GCA subsection 11104.
Does any of my colleagues, as you look at the amendment, does anyone would like to speak on the amendment? This was discussed prior to our recess where he basically gave a definition of indigent detainees or inmates. Speaker, do you have a copy of it? It's very simple. It's exactly what we discussed and there was no disagreement to it. It's now in writing. Okay? Are there any, anyone would like to speak? There being none?
None, nobody, Mr. Chair. Go ahead, move. So moved.
Okay. Are there any objections to this amendment? No objection? So ordered, the amendment is approved and attached. My colleagues, we have completed all amendments that were filed. Madam Vice Speaker, do you have a motion at this point?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to say I want to move that Bill number 99-36LS, as amended in the Committee of the Whole, be placed on the third reading file with the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole.
Thank you, Madam Vice Speaker. This is just to place?
Yes.
And then at the end of the next bill, then there'll be a motion to rise to place.
Right, just the third reading.
Okay?
It'll be placed on the third reading with the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole, or just?
My colleagues, the motion is to place?
Yes. Mr. Chair, there was, I do apologize just for the indulgence of our colleagues. They wanted to know if the changing of the amendment of the title was done, and I said yes. So just to confirm, the clerk is shaking her head, yes?
Yes, all three amendments were approved and passed. And all the vice speaker's doing is recommending to be placed at the end of the second bill that's going to be in the Committee of the Whole. Then we would rise, then I will report out to the committee, to the body, the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole.
So the third, third reading file?
Yes.
With the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole, sir.
Yes, to place.
Thank you.
Okay. On the motion, are there any, to place with the recommendation to the third reading file? Any objection?
No objection.
There being none? So ordered, we will now stand on a short recess while we prepare the panel to come in for Bill 121. All right? Short recess.
The Committee of the Whole is now reconvened. Just to go over real quick the rules of engagement, we are reconvened on Bill number 121-36COR, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing. Let's go over the rules of engagement, just as a reminder, especially for those joining us today on the panel. We will have two rounds of questions for the panel, with each senator allotted five minutes for questions, not including responses. After the completion of the two rounds of questions, panelists will be excused until called upon for the next bill discussion. Amendments to each bill will be entertained after the two rounds of questions. After we complete the amendments on the bill, we'll proceed to the next bill. Materials for the Committee of the Whole are in the shared Google Drive folder labeled 63021 Committee of the Whole. Proposed amendments must be submitted in writing to the clerk via email, 36glsession@gmail.com. Amendments not in writing will be called out of order. After we complete the amendments to each bill, then we'll entertain a motion to rise from the Committee of the Whole, at which time there will be a recommendation made to report the bill out of the Committee of the Whole. And at this time, I'd like to call upon the panel guests first, to have them introduce themselves, beginning with the gentleman to the left of me, Mr. Byrne, and then we'll go all the way down. And if each panel member can introduce themselves and what capacity they are here today in.
Good afternoon. Edward Byrne, Director, Department of Administration.
Stephen Gurrell, Director of OSB.
Good afternoon, Senators. Tina Garcia, Public Finance Manager, Guam Economic Development Authority.
Good afternoon, Senators. My name is Lillian Posadas. I am the Hospital Administrator.
Good afternoon, Senators. Arthur Sanagustin, Director of Public Health and Social Services.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Senators. Teresa Ariola, the Director of Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center.
Thank you. And can we have the Sergeant-at-Arms swear on the members of the panel?
Can you please stand? And raise your right hand. Under penalty of perjury, do you all affirm that any and all information that you provide today, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Okay, Mr. Chair, they're all under oath. You may proceed.
Thank you. I'd like to call upon the primary sponsor of the measure, Senator Joe Sanagustin, for his opening statement on the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And good afternoon to my colleagues and to the people of Guam. For over 40 years, the Guam Memorial Hospital has worked to serve our island community. Our island has grown and continues to grow. Our healthcare facilities has not aligned with our population. Additionally, Department of Public Health and Social Services has seen better days with our home. But now has dealt to serve the public with what a place to call home. Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center continues to expand their service as our population grows and the needs of our people constantly change. Our island is growing, and our healthcare facility must have the capacity to continually provide quality care for our island community. The structural issues of our healthcare agencies should be addressed promptly, and Bill 121-36COR does that. We should not wait any longer to provide our people with improved facilities. As we complete the discussion and the amendments to the bill, passing Bill 121 will provide the funding mechanism for the construction and maintenance of the 21st Century Healthcare Center of Exon. I look forward to discussion on this measure and ask for the affirmative support of this body to pass this bill. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We'll begin round one of questions for our colleagues, beginning with Senator James Moynihan. Senator Duñez?
Good morning, or good afternoon, excuse me. I guess this is more of a question kind of for the author, but maybe I'll go to GIDEA on this. How is GIDEA's view with regard to combining all of these needs into one, knowing that we have the hospital pretty much at the forefront of need? That, of course, public health, you know, recently with regard to the fire and the situation with the facility there in Mangila. However, I think at this point, they're somewhat situated, but of course, the direct healthcare services to our people being in the most immediate need, not only the current structure, but of course, the plan that's currently under development. Is this bill voluminous at this point from GIDEA's perspective, and should we be maybe more focused on GMH?
Thank you, Senator. For myself, I think we've been focusing on the financing, but the fact that we are in a crossroads where, like you said, we have public health in need, GMH in need, Guam Behavioral Health also expanding services, I think having a central location and being in a position where we could finance as well as use American Rescue Plan funds to help develop the campus will certainly be a great benefit for the people of Guam.
So maybe then I would go to GMH. Good afternoon, Lillian, welcome. Recently, in the media, it's been reported that there is now back in play, and I know we have our legislative representative that's been going through the meetings with regard to the task force. But recently in the media, it's been reported that OCA is now back on the table for consideration. I know that the discussion of the Mangila property, at least, that I believe might still be on the table, was going to be surveyed and was quite a large parcel. Considering this bill, is the acreage been established for a campus such as this, which was being proposed in this legislation, for up to three different medical facilities, GMH, public health, and behavioral wealth, or health, excuse me? So has at least the general acreage requirement been established for a campus, a medical campus?
It's kind of hard to understand, Senator, and I apologize. But from what I understand, the question is, the OCA point, like you said, was mentioned, and in comparing it to the Mangila field?
Correct.
Which is a larger area. It does have 102 acres, is what I am told by the land management, and we could possibly get a little bit more. So in actuality, that has been factored already in terms of having the three major healthcare facilities into that 102 acreage. And so that really is more advantageous, more beneficial, to have the three healthcare facilities in one location, you know, for the continuity of care for the patients, particularly those who, you know, all of us, you know, the clients that are common to our facilities. And with OCA point, if I can just again reiterate and emphasize that OCA point is only 36 acres. There's no room to go, you know, wide, to go up vertical. The structure itself may not be strong enough. It's an old facility, and we don't want to experience a collapse of that building if we're going to go vertical. So really, in actuality, it really is better, much more safer, and more practical to then have the healthcare campus at the Mangila field, that we can accommodate all three healthcare, major healthcare agencies, in addition to having, incorporating DISIT with us, and, you know, perhaps even a veterans wing. So really, it's a more advantageous and more practical, more realistic, and more beneficial for the island of Guam, to have it in the Mangila, plus it is centrally located. Another point I want to point out with regards to the OCA point, if we're going to build there, it's going to have major disruption with the operations. We're already struggling with parking. If we're going to construct a new hospital there, that's a major battle.
Lillian, just to be clear, when we're talking about OCA, we're talking about the old hospital site, right? Not your current footprint?
That's what they call EPAU Point.
Okay.
That was pointed out by Department of Land Management.
Right.
That itself is EPAU. Even that is not sufficient acreage.
Okay, that's why I'm, this is what I'm trying to get on the record here, because I know that this has been discussed in the public, and so I'm just trying to see what is the, because, you know, going into the original landowners and such, that's a deeper matter, but I just wanted to kind of get an idea from you, since we're dealing with a medical campus, at least at this point, in the vision of this bill, it would seem that OCA and EPAU Point would not have the requisite acreage for a campus. For a hospital, probably, yes, but not for a campus, correct?
Correct. Plus, it's a residential area, so it's going to be quite a battle.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a question for mental health, or excuse me, Guam Behavioral Health. I correct myself. I've been raised in that area, family property, visit people quite a bit over there, and of course, frequent the hospital to see different folks once in a while. That building has got to be probably the best building, maintained, upkept, and recently some additions that you've laid out. I'm curious as to why Guam Behavioral Health is interested in becoming part of a campus when you have really probably the nicest government of Guam building in the inventory, I think.
Thank you, Senator, for that question. The current location of Guam Behavioral Health is over 20 years old. We cannot, we do not fit in the main facility, as evident in our lots of our rentals, outside the tamuning facility. It behooves the Department of Guam Behavioral Health to be next to public health and GMH in a campus for services that we can, we can have and streamline. For example, pharmacy, laboratory, things of that nature. And so, most of my clients are Guam, are public health's clients, and if we're focused on being client-centered, which Guam Behavioral Health is a CARF accredited agency, it's all about being, making it easier for the clients. So being together with my other healthcare facilities would behoove us.
So I guess just finally with public health. Art, welcome. I just kind of want to get this, you know, see if this synergy is here and everybody's completely on board. And this is, a lot of this is for our public that's listening today to kind of understand, you know, where we're going and to get our executives, you know, more on the record than just a public hearing as we hear this bill, to kind of lay out the vision from the department heads. And many of you have institutional knowledge, obviously, so, you know, this is probably something that is not only just envisioned in this bill, but maybe even something you've had in mind over the years. So Art, can you share how public health feels, they fit into this, you know, kind of large-scale multi-agency campus as envisioned in this bill?
Sure, sure, absolutely. Senator and members of the legislature, yes, public health does find itself fitting quite well into this medical campus concept, being much closer to both GMH and Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, we find will be advantageous to our operations. Also, as Lillian had earlier stated, we're also now exploring the inclusion of DISIT, the veterans area for the veterans, and seeing that these populations that we serve have common interest between our three primary agencies, and now including DISIT. So I can give you a really quick example, just from the social work perspective, right? Because you have social workers both in mental health and at the hospital for discharge planning, that could be very advantageous, because you have the Division of Senior Citizens present that has a case management program that can coordinate and link with the social work discharge team at the hospital. In addition, DISIT also has a support services made up of caseworkers. So from the social service perspective, there would be definitely a positive aspect. We do encourage the development for all our partners to be there. As Director Ariola has also said, we do share clients. Our clients on the MIP Medicaid program, access services, the social workers at the hospital need to assist with applications for Medicaid or MIP, we're just, I'm not sure how far we're going to be, but we're going to be very nearby. And so we also look at how we can share office space for training centers, maybe everybody has a training center, but we can share resources. And I think really the COVID-19 situation is really, if anything highlighted, if anything the COVID-19 situation is truly highlighted, or need to collaborate even greater. Lillian, it was our COVID-19 hospital, and public health was there to provide support any way we can. They also served as a vaccine site. When the vaccines became available, Therese herself turned a part of her facility into an isolation site. And so there's been a lot of collaboration even before this measure we came to, or came to the floor today. But public health and social services does in fact see itself fitting quite well with the other agencies and working with them, and so that we can also share our resources within close proximity. And we see it as an access, where there was greater access for our clients, ease of services, and I just call Lillian and say, hey, I have a little situation here, the client's in my office, can you help me out? Teresa, this is Art. And so we think that that would be more expedient in some ways, in many ways, I believe. So I do see it as a positive step forward. Thank you, Senator.
So quickly looping back to Tina, then with GIDEA once again. Do you see a phased approach here from a financing scheme, or is it advantageous to, because I mean, I would imagine particularly for debt services purposes and everything else, I mean, do you see us going from the main priority outward in terms of a build-out, and also for financing, and also for debt service?
The advantage of doing something now or within the next year is that interest rates are at an all-time low. As you know, our country is recovering from COVID, and treasuries have kept the interest rates at near zero. Doing it in phases, I mean, it, you know, you're reducing your cost of issuance, for instance, because you're making one, one issue versus three different issues. And, you know, I mean, there's give and take on both sides, because then, you know, how fast can you draw down the funds for the facility? And so, you know, we have to do a whole, it's hard to say what is the best route, but, you know, first off, the interest rates are low, so we would be paying, you know, better rates today than we would, you know, if the rates start going up. So right now, rates are still very low, so should we be able to hold it? And, you know, even if construction takes two to two years or so, we would still be able to have a debt service that we can plan for at what we would say is the lowest debt service that we can secure at the time.
So do you envision, and I guess, I'm sure you've been at the forefront, knowing that time would be of the essence for if the build-out was going to be comprehensive of all facilities, because I know even the hospital right now, you guys are meeting weekly, right, Lillian? Or at least every other week on the task force in terms of developing the, sort of the plan, so that you can have something, you know, basically engineering and the build-out ready and everything else to meet your timelines? Are you, are you leading the effort at GIDEA to make sure that the other entities would be on track as well? Because you would think that if you were going out and you, you had the financing, you know, you would want to know what, what all the plans were. Like, that's why I started with the foot Uh, like, that's why I started with the footprint. Okay, we, we know we need 102 acres for a footprint. And now we're going into, you know, what the kind of plans have to be put together and the vision of, uh, you know, square footage, everything else, historical data, how, you know, what? So you build something that, that's going to last for decades to come, that's going to meet your requirements? All of this A and E seems pretty voluminous as well. Is Gita sort of, you know, kind of pushing that along?
Um, well, Gita is working with the ta- healthcare task force. And we have three committees that are moving, um, quickly. Again, because we understand the situation for the facilities and, and the need to replace them or get our, um, public health situated. So again, it's, um, our task force are, we're meeting regularly to try and move it along as quickly as possible.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have some finance questions, but of course, I know my time is up and I'll wait for the second yard round, or I'll steal some time from Jim.
All right. We're, we're gonna, I honestly believe we're going to have sufficient time for all of the questions my colleagues may be asking. Senator Torres, do you have any question for the panel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. In reading the beginning of the bill, which is the legislative findings and policy, um, I, I kind of want to go back to maybe Gita and, and get an understanding of the genesis of this bill. Because if you look at, for example, page four, around line 18, it's already contemplated, uh, in this bill that, that there is a, a funding for the payment of annual estimated costs for the lease-back agreement. And you came up with a figure of $35 million. And the source you've identified as the EITC tax credits that Guam is expected to receive in the amount of about $60 million annually. My question is, going back to the genesis of that, how, how did we arrive at an estimated cost, um, for this facility that would, would, you know, provide for, for this kind of an estimate in the, the bill's findings and policy? And is there short of? So that's number one. And then later on, it, it talks about the project management and all of that. Um, the supervision, the study, the appropriation for that in, in, on page eight. It goes into that in depth in section 83104. But my question is, is, I know you mentioned, um, Mrs. Garcia, that there's a task force, there's three different task force addressing the three different components. But I guess I'm, I'm asking, where, where are we right now? Like, how did we arrive at a concept? What sort of feasibility studies or, um, general plan studies came up with a type of project at an estimated, with an estimated footprint at an approximate cost with a payback for the lease, um, payment? Can you just walk us through that real quick? Because I, I see that we're already at, we're, we're getting towards the, you know, the, the 30-yard line. But I'm trying to understand how it, it progressed to that point.
Well, um, Senator, for many years, we have been doing, um, studies on, on the hospital and how are we going to, to, um, make it more efficient? The building itself is, um, you know, close to 50 years. It's met its, uh, lifeline. And so, we've been, um, Gita has been actively participating in feasibility studies to, um, to, to help the hospital. And whether it's, uh, fix the existing building or, um, or build a new, new facility. And I guess what is really, what really launched this is the most recent Army Corps of Engineers report that said that, um, you know, and again, third-party assessment. We can, you know, GMH is, uh, the facility itself really needs dire repairs in order to continue to service the people of Guam. And so they came up with an estimate of about $760 million, or $743, thank you. And, um, and so from there, we had the governor's, um, statement that if we can move forward, she'd like to use American Rescue Plan funds. And, and that adds in another $300 million that she is willing to commit to getting this done. And again, um, her marching orders are, you know, we've done enough studies. I think, uh, we counted 12 studies just in the last 10 years between, uh, the legislature, between, um, the administration of, um, of trying to, um, figure how to help them. And so she said, enough studies, let's get moving. Task force were developed to, to begin, um, addressing the issues. We have the financing task force, you know. We're putting together papers to begin looking for grants to, to, uh, finance shortfall. We have, uh, facilities task force to find out, I'm sorry, services task force to determine the, uh, services to be offered. And, and look, and that's going to be supported by a, um, how efficiently can we support the community? And then the third task force, as mentioned, was the land committee. And, and so the governor is committed to getting this done. She said, you know, enough studies, let's get going. And so that's, um, how we've moved along.
And so this lease-back, uh, option is one of the findings of the task force, that that is the, the process that is probably the only feasible process for Guam to realize? I mean, because you're essentially, you've already, it, it appears that you've arrived at, uh, a general plan of what, what this type of, what the need is, what the facility footprint would be, what the general cost for that would be. And if it were borne by a lease, borne by, or, or done by a contractor with a lease-back provision, this is the estimated, uh, cost for that, right? So I'm just trying to put it in place that this is e- exactly why we're at the place that we're at. Because many, many would wonder, well, who, who determined that? And, and what, you know, what went into place? But, um, it's, it seems like you've discussed about a, a decade of, of work, uh, that went into this. Correct?
Absolutely. Um, and again, um, with all the studies we've gone through, um, we're excited that, um, we now have the seed funds from the governor as well as the authority to move forward. So, so again, um, we have, um, the committee, um, all committed to move, move forward quickly on the project.
I, I don't have any further questions at this point. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And I think that's similar to what the speaker is going to ask, pretty much where the project's at. Madam Speaker, do you have any questions that you may ask the panel to maybe talk about the project?
Yeah, I would like, notwithstanding our rules, to ask if they could just lead the discussion here today by explaining this financing, so we don't have to ask it piecemeal. Just explain the financing that's being proposed here, how you came to this versus any other type of financing, why this is the best value for Guam.
Well, we have, um, uh, my, um, Gita has set up, has been tasked again to help put together the, the project and move it forward. And one of the committees, the financing subcommittee, we did look at a lot of different, um, a lot of different funding sources. And one of the things that we, um, we had to assess is, um, what is our debt ceiling? Debt ceiling would impact any direct bonds or loans that we would, uh, secure. And, um, right now, we're looking at about a little over $353 million in, um, debt that we can, um, borrow against our ceiling. But, you know, again, the need is more. The, um, the hospital itself, as mentioned, was, um, $743 million to construct. So, so we said, we, we need more than that. And then we, we also said we were going to look at federal grants. And, and so we are looking at all of those federal partners. We do have, um, again, within our, um, financing subcommittee, and these are all documents that can be made available, it's all public. Uh, we're looking at HUD, we're looking at bond financing, um, lease financing. It, it's a proven model. It's, um, done for our public schools. And it's proven well because not only do we have a, uh, building that is, um, building that can be put up quickly, but we also have the maintenance for the term of the lease. And, um, that's a beneficial item for, for our facilities. So again, uh, because of our, our debt ceiling constraints and, um, the fact that we do need, uh, more than what is available, we, we can work this out and get what the people at Guam need using the lease-back financing to be augmented by, uh, grant, grants that we hope to secure.
So this is pretty much, you're saying, the only option that we're going to look at now? Because, um, because bond financing wouldn't give us enough? You don't want to do partial?
Yeah, we don't want to really.
Can you tell us then that the numbers? For example, with the interest rates that you guys came down and told us about for the other bonds refinancing? Or if we were out, to go out for a bond right now for, let's say, the remaining bond capacity that we have? What, what would be the interest rates? And what, what would we pay in the end? Because my lay calculations, you know, on the lease-back, we're going to pay a significantly, you know, much higher amount than what we're talking about today. Right? Uh, it, it's going to cost us, what is your total cost? $1 billion?
Well, again, you're looking at, um, you're looking at $35 million times 30, 30 years. And that'll be, you know, over $1 billion. But, um, if we stick to the $35 million and we did a lease-back financing, we could get rates as low as 4.5% on the lease-back financing. And again, the advantage is, we, we lock it in now, we get the maximum proceeds, and, um, we're able to level that debt service for the next 30 years.
Right, but that's committing $35 million annually.
$35 million annually.
On top of all of our other debt service.
Yes.
Right?
And, and again, this would be a lease-back payment, lease payment. But yes, it'd be listed as a obligation.
So it'd be added where we put in the budget for our, um, debt service, we're going to add $35 million to those amounts, is that right? And so, I guess, Mr. Burns, if this is a plan that you guys have come up with, if you could just describe to us, um, how that is feasible for Guam?
It sounds and is a lot of money, Madam Speaker, certainly. With, the bill provides that this will be primarily financed by the new income that we're going to receive, uh, under the EITC credit arrangement. This is income that we currently don't have because we're currently paying EITC, uh, EITC payments. Uh, from next year, these payments will be reimbursed by the federal government. So this is new revenue, um, which is ready to be appropriated. And, um, something just over half of that is contemplated by this bill to be appropriated to this debt service.
Why do you say half?
Well, the, the, um, the amount of the, the bill, the bill estimates the EITC tax credit income to be about $60 million. So, and, uh, from what I understand, when we were speaking to bondholders, uh, very recently, we estimated that the EITC income would be between $57 and $60 million. So 35 is just a little over half of that.
Okay, and so could, could you just maybe state again? To finance 700, or, okay, let's say, $1 billion in projects, $1 billion worth of projects? That's the GMHA facility, the public health and behavioral health facilities. $1 billion. They're going to put in $300 million from ARP. And then that leaves $767 million to be financed. And then we end up paying, um, you're saying 4.5% or 5% uh, on that? And we end up with, uh, what was the full final amount? $1 billion something? And addition, it's additional $300 million from the actual cost if we were able to pay that straight out today, right? Mr. Burns, what, uh, they estimate the annual lease payment to be $60 million. And I guess that's why I'm asking you why you say half.
The, the 60 million that I was talking about was the EITC credit income.
Right, so the revenue we're expecting from EITC is about $60 million. But they also estimate the total annual lease payment to be $60 million.
Yes, um, that, from what I understand, um, and I did my own back-of-the-envelope calculations on this. If you, if you take the, the simple proposition of just the hospital, the, uh, recon, the, the new construction cost was $743 million. If 300 of that is funded by the ARP funds, that leaves you with, uh, $443. And over 30 years, the amount of debt service is somewhere between $33 and $35 million. Uh, and that's where the number came from. But if, if you include, uh, additional costs for the other facilities that's contemplated to be built in this, uh, in, in this, um, in the same place, then of course, the debt service will, will increase accordingly depending upon the cost of the facilities for public health and behavioral health.
Right, so, and, you know, I think it's going to be very confusing for us to think about, to discuss two models. I mean, unless you're proposing that we consider separating GMH out from the rest of these projects, that's not how this bill does it. So, can we be just clear, Mr. Chair? Which, I mean, is that a, are you suggesting that we do that, Mr. Burns? That we separate GMH out from the other projects? And we, we use those calculations today instead of the calculations from Gita that combine them all, that give us a, a cost of over, uh, $1 billion? And if we use ARP $300 million, that it still leaves us with a cost of $767 million to begin all of that. And so we need the financing on that, not on the $400 million like you're supposed to.
Uh, Madam Speaker, I don't know enough about the, the terms of the project itself. I know that the concept is to have all these healthcare facilities in one place, both better to serve the public and to achieve economies of scale. So, when, uh, when the total project is reviewed, you're going to arrive at a new cost, and that might need additional financing. But as we sit here today, we don't know. We, we've got, we've got what we have in front of us. And this is a really good start to kickstart the fund, the financing that's going to be needed for this project. Especially since we know, for the very first time, that we have this revenue stream that's available to service it.
Okay, I'm on page 11 of the bill. It says pledge of revenues, and it pledges, uh, $35 million from the EITC reimbursements for FY '22 only. And then it says the sum of $35 million from general fund appropriated annually. And then, federal funds that may be made available. And then, other financing options. And to include loans, grants, bond financing, and other alternate funding or financing options. I'm just trying to get a clear picture. You know, we're being asked to, uh, put, and then the, I'm sorry. And then the estimate that, uh, the healthcare financing task force came up with, is my understanding? Um, Ms. Garcia, if you could confirm, is 60 mil, 61, almost 61 million in annual lease payments? Is that right?
Again, if, um, so that was written as, um, very preliminary numbers. Um, we had set, we know the number for GMH. We're still working on, uh, public health and behavioral. And again, And again, things are still moving forward. But what we do state in our presentations is that we are going after grants. We are going after, for instance, the infrastructure. We have federal highways that we can probably work with to, on the road expansion. All of these costs are, all of these shortfalls, we believe that we're going to go after with grants. So again, if we did everything today, that's what it would be. But as you know, what we've said in our Financial Healthcare Committee is that there is going to be a campaign to lock in as many grants. I mean, just to, for instance, recently, the Chuk government got 100 million from DOY for one to build, you know, build their hospital. So we're looking at all of those funding sources to put together our position and, you know, again, reduce the cost as much as possible.
Right, Mr. Chair, I would ask that, you know, we're very limited in the time that we're being allotted to ask questions. I would like to ask if the panel, especially GIDEA, could make a presentation as to this financing? Because not everybody was able to attend this financing meeting. And these estimates are double the amount that, I think, if I can, you know, get from Mr. Burns, and the bill is being appropriated in the bill. And so I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page here.
Understood, but we're going to go ahead and move on. Your time has run out. But we're going to be able to go around, you'll be able to come back. Senator Perez, do you have any questions for the panel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of questions. I guess we'll start with perhaps GIDEA. So I'm looking at the procurement part of it. And it states that an RFP will be used. And RFPs generally don't have cost. It's not limited by cost. So I'm really concerned that this is probably the most expensive means, a procurement method. You know, considering other procurements that have happened through RFP, the cost went beyond what was anticipated. What is your recommendation as far as something like of this magnitude to help limit or reduce the cost?
So we have used the RFP process for our last three lease financings. And the thing about the RFP process is that you're qualifying the proposers. So you're getting someone that has experience in... When we did the last one, got experience in financing, experience in building schools, and experience in managing and maintaining the schools. So once you qualify them, then you begin to talk, then you talk to them about the pricing. And again, that's where you negotiate everything down to what the service, what service is going to be provided for maintenance, whether annually or every five years, capital reserves. I mean, these are all things that we work with. But through the procurement, through the RFP process, you're getting someone that has the experience in this, therefore will provide you the best efficiency. Because, you know, you're getting someone that has built a similar hospital or healthcare facility, someone that has run a facility, and so they understand the needs. So that's why we go through the RFP process. Because that is more important. You're creating a long-term relationship with this proposer to not only build it, but to maintain it.
And so this is a design, build, finance, lease, transfer, maintenance type of contract. So you're thinking of one contractor? Or are you thinking multiple contractors?
Usually the structure, for instance, of construction, there are multiple contractors. And what's happening with our schools now is that they work on the maintenance contracts. So whether it's insurance, the insurance and maintenance contracted, contract is reviewed annually to review what you want done this year and then what the insurance cost will be and so on. So it's an ongoing process. But at least the comfort for the government is that, again, you're working with people that are familiar with the, you know, the construction of a building like this. So when they come in with their design, they know, you know, how many, where the bathrooms would be, where the maintenance offices will be, because they're familiar with the efficiency needed in that type of facility. They know, for instance, that maintenance will be, you know, every five years, every three years, we change out our air cons versus five years. I mean, depending on what is needed, that's where we would work with a contractor to say, well, give me a more efficient process, you know? Because, you know, I'm not just going to ask someone that never maintained a hospital to maintain this. You know, I want someone that is familiar with the process and knows what to expect.
Okay, just to recap, so you're looking at how many different contractors?
So usually you have an architecture, engineering firm. You have a construction firm. You would have the suppliers. You would have the maintenance firms. Depending what their service is needed, that's how many firms you would hire. So again, we would get into those details with the clients as we move forward.
So the current leasebacks that we have, like, for instance, the DOE system, is it, it's my understanding that the construction and maintenance are tied together? Is that correct?
The contractor who does the construction will probably not do the maintenance. I mean, if anything, we would require them to provide an insurance, the construction insurance, so that if there's any problems over the next year, they could repair that. But the maintenance facility is, you know, whole different contract, unless that company, that construction company, has a subsidiary. But usually they're two different companies. Because the maintenance does more of the cleaning, the repair work, the painting, bathroom facilities, cleaning, mopping, general areas. So all of that would have to be detailed out.
So wouldn't it be better to kind of like, if there's different contracts? I mean, just kind of like looking at other experiences that the government of Guam has had? You know, I would think perhaps we would kind of minimize the use of RFPs and use, if we can switch to IFBs for like, say, the construction itself? Is that, or even the maintenance too? Because that could be specified.
So the process would be, once you get a developer, the developer would be the one to, say, secure the... Would be able to name at the time, will say, give us your contractor. Give us your supplier. Give us your logistics company. So, you know, we would ask them to, you know, this developer, this healthcare developer would be able to tell us, I would need this construction company because I've worked with them before. I know that they'll deliver a good product. I would need this person on board. We don't approve the subcontractors. We're just working with the developer to make sure that they give us the product we want. So they would be the one to, based on our price negotiation, they would be the one to get the contractors on board. We would just have to approve it or, you know, to make sure that they're not having issues with any other Guam agency. But, you know, the developer would be responsible for securing those services.
Okay, that seems to be contrary to procurement law.
No. It's, if I could, I could probably give to you the proposal from the developer. Because what we're procuring is setting out an RFP for a developer who could, a developer who could do the... Work with GIDEA on the financing, work with the hospital on the construction, the permitting. I'm trying to find that exact... So the developer, you know, like, if you're going to build the project, they're going to do it according to our need. We would work with that developer to provide the needs. And the developer would be the one to secure the service, not GIDEA. So that, you know, we're working with the hospital. We say we want to construct this project, and this is the price we have on it. The developer would be the one to say, okay, I'm going to use this contractor. Because they, you know, the developer also has a goal to provide, you know, to get the best price for himself as well, him or herself. Because as a private sector employee, they're driven a little bit by the, you know, they have to make some profit. So, so again, they will, you know, as opposed to a bid where you go with the lowest, the developer would look for the most efficient. Because if he doesn't get someone that can provide this service in a good way, remember, they're not done once construction is done. They own that facility for 30 years. So they know that if they get a construction company that does a poor job, it's going to cost them more in the long run. Because the government will say, this is what we agreed to. So again, you know, we feel that this process will be more efficient because they would, they own the project as well.
The other part of this bill, so it's under Section 83108, assignment. And it states that "The contractor may assign without the need of the consent of Guam Economic Development Authority" the contract, the lease and the leaseback to any underwriter, trustee, or other party as appropriate to facilitate the contractor financing. So what is your position on that? Without the consent, this company that we are expecting a long-term agreement to assign the contract to another entity?
As appropriate. Well, again, we, you know, we could change that to say that they would require the consent. But the whole point is if they're dealing with somebody that is not providing the services, for instance, a trustee, they feel they can get a better service, or that trustee itself is no longer offering that service, then they have to change out. There are other reasons for these changeouts, these services. But again, because they own the facility, it would behoove them to get someone that will provide that service to the contractor as well. So if you, as a contractor, feel that you can, you know, you pay annual fees to your trustee, and another trustee is offering a lower rate, then you should be able to get the lower rate as the trustee. But, you know, that would, we could change that to be with the consent of GIDEA. But really, it's to the benefit of both the contractor and GIDEA.
Okay, so is there an incentives in this bill? So, I mean, we're expecting roughly about 30-year partnership, so to speak. Is there an incentive that you see that would allow this, ensure that the building is in good shape? So once they hand it over, you know, we're not receiving something that now we need to rebuild another hospital? Is there safeguards?
Absolutely. Because the funds are being given to us by bondholders, given to the developer by bondholders. If there's a chance that they're providing poor service or a facility that's run down, the safeguard is that if we feel that there's an issue, then the developer has, and we decide we're not going to pay that debt service for that year until you fix this problem, then the developer is also obligated to the bondholders to make those payments. So if we don't pay them, he can't pay their bondholders. So it'll be for sure an issue that if we have any issue, if we withhold payment for whatever reason because of poor service or so on, then he won't be able to pay his bondholders. So again, the developer has a commitment or he has an obligation to provide the service we agreed to at a certain level to make sure that we, as the customer, we, as the leaser of the building, is happy. Otherwise, he won't be able to pay his bills, his debt to the bondholders.
And can you maybe discuss what type of financing this developer would be able themselves of? So what kind of financing? So you're saying they would go after bonds, most likely? And other types of financing? Can you explain what those types of financing that this developer would be using, potentially using?
So the other types of financing, again, we are looking first at leaseback financing as a primary vehicle. They also have available to them certain tax credits that they can go after, for instance, federal tax credits specific to these facilities, healthcare facilities. They would be able to have access to those tax credits because, again, providing a facility, a public facility, you have access to a lot of these tax credits. New market tax credits, opportunity zone credits. You know, so these are other available sources that the developer can tap so that, again, their out-of-pocket is lower. And then, of course, the government will look to the federal grants that can also help reduce the cost of the facility or help us just total facility management.
What kind of standards or, let's say, performance measures will be in place to monitor this type of project?
So every year, they have to come to, part of the agreement will say, okay, let's get together and talk about the insurance needs, the capital maintenance needs. What is our plan for the next year? This is called the additional rentals portion. So there's the basic lease. And then every year, we come together because we would have to come to the legislature, one, to secure the lease payment, but two, to also secure the additional rentals payment to cover insurance and maintenance. And as you know, that annual process would be done between the developer and the healthcare facility operators.
Then potentially that the price could be higher? The cost could be more than 30 million a year? Because insurance rates might have gone up or other factors?
It could be more or less. We don't know today until we get further along the process. But again, this is a base point that now we can start going to our federal partners to say, you know, we have this much that we can raise. We need, we have a shortfall. Can you help us with that shortfall? And by doing that, then we can start building up our portfolio so that we could meet the needs that we're looking for. And so, you know, what the 35, right now, we're saying will be fully, will be a lease payment, a full lease payment. If we get enough grants, reduce the amount we can borrow, then that could encompass the lease and the additional rental, you know, to cover insurance and maintenance. So again, it's all putting together the package. And, you know, of course, we'll come back to you should that, you know, should we say it really can't work, we will certainly come back to you. But at least we have a starting point to start having those discussions with our federal partners.
Okay, thank you. And the, one more question, I guess, or time still? Oh, the regards to the land. So can you explain, I think there were several options of choices for land. Has the task force identified or selected the property?
Sure, thank you for that question. We have, the Department of Land Management is focused right now on the Mangilau Field. They are doing a three-pronged survey. The archaeological, the explosive, and the... I forgot what the third prong is in terms of... in terms of environmental. That's, those are the three-pronged surveys that they are conducting right now. And they are expending all their resources because they've got the right to enter from the military. So that's what they're doing right now. They're conducting that assessment of the land.
All right, thank you. And then, so the milit-, so it's owned by the military. So basically, it's not in the hands of government at this point?
It's in the process and in the discussion with the governor and the joint Marianas that there is, there is that process of handing it over to the governor, to the government of Guam.
And would anybody be able to answer, would it be a complete transfer? Or are there gonna be certain strings attached?
It's either transfer or a lease. I am not involved in the discussion, but the governor has given us, you know, some preliminary discussion that she's had with the joint, with the military, that it's an ongoing discussion, that it will be then handed over to the government of Guam, to the governor, either as a lease or, I forgot what the other option is.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Shelton, do you have any question for the panel?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Half a day, everyone. Thank you for being here in the discussion so far today. I know that in the bill, it does mention what the governor has announced she plans to do to fund the hospital, which is $300 million from the federal funding in response to the pandemic. And I want to know, Mr. Byrne, if there has been any discussion if this bill were to pass here in the legislature today, is she reconsidering that direct use of $300 million for the hospital? Or will she still want to pay that directly for this facility? And pay upfront and still use this model of financing?
Thank you, Senator. The governor is still reviewing all, all the aspects of both the sums of money and the conditions associated with the ARP funds. And she hasn't yet reached a conclusion. But she has said publicly that, that this 300 million should be allocated from the ARP funds when that decision has been taken, and it hasn't been taken yet.
Okay, thank you very much. And now, back to Mrs. Garcia. I know you talked about the different, different options for funding and how this was a proven model for the leaseback option. Is this going to be the lowest cost to the government of Guam?
I think if you take in all costs considering for the 30-year period, I believe it will be because it includes maintenance.
Okay, thank you very much. And what is the total timeline from your experience with these kinds of projects? How much time are we looking at from the time we pass this bill today and we authorize these long-term leases and these contracts to the time we break down, break ground and see a completion of these projects?
So I think our goal is to break ground next year, right? October next year. And so we are all working on a very accelerated timeline. Again, if we're gonna go to the market to get the lease financing, we certainly have to have our, all the details as much as possible. So we would, we would keep moving forward on, on, you know, getting all the studies done that we need to get done and, and all our plans. And again, as mentioned earlier, we have our financing structure. We have, and then I think in the next month or so, we're gonna start approaching our federal partners to, to, you know, hey, put it on their radar so that in the next few months, they can see where they can help us. So, so I think right now, we have been given a timeline to break ground by October, and that's what we're all working towards right now.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure everyone is excited to hear that. We're all longing for a new facility for all of you. So that's, that's exciting. And when will we start paying back this money, this lease? Do we start paying from the time that we break ground, from the time we sign our contract, or once the facilities are complete?
Usually in our financings, whenever there's a construction financing, we include at least two years of capital interest so that the government will not have to pay for at least the first two years during construction.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. I appreciate the answers today.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. Vice Speaker, Senator Dean Hardy, co-sponsor, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for giving me the opportunity. And, you know, I want to thank you, Mr. Chair, for giving me the opportunity to be the co-sponsor. More importantly, as I look at this program, and maybe just a reiteration from the panel members, that this is a, a bill to create that public-private partnership under the Build, Lease, Operate, and Transfer Funding Mechanism with the contractor for up to 30 years, right, GIDEA? So this, this bill will create the public-private partnership under the Build, Lease, Operate, and Transfer Funding Mechanism with the contractor, the developer, developer for up to 30 years. Am I right?
Yes.
And, and it also notes in one of the provisions that the contractor is responsible for all cost expenses and fees of any kind or nature as it relates to the responsibility of this contract if it were to be awarded out, right?
Yes.
My question then is based, one of the questions is the bill in its entire entirety uses the word contractor when discussing whoever the winning bidder is. Is that word sufficient? Or should we name, change that name to developer? Because it's interchanging back and forth. Does it make a difference? Is it, is it critical or not critical?
At this point, it's not critical for the financing.
Okay. And then the other part was, I do know that I was very, it was very critical for me to ask the author of the legislation to support the efforts of the hospital's IT and building management system. So I wanted to ask the administrator of GMH, what are your thoughts on the inclusion of this? And, and maybe share with, with us and the listening audience the extension that was granted to GMH to comply and if this will work? The, for the IT system? I know that there was a request for 20 million. You know, the CMS had stated that GMH would lose their Medicare eligibility for this. So in the provision, I had talked to the author of the, of the bill to include this cost in. And I want to thank him for that. But I wanted to make sure, will this work based on the extension that was granted to you guys? Is this, is, will this suffice?
Absolutely, and thank you, Senator. Yes, I'm glad that you put that into this legislation because it's a very critical entity of, not just for the hospital, but also the connectivity between the hospital, public health, and behavioral health. Electronic health record system is very key, you know, for the, not only for the continuity of patient care, but for the efficiency of the health practitioners or the clinicians to be able to get the information, you know, electronically when, when we're seeing a patient that was from public health or a patient that is here at GMH and then discharged and needs to be followed up by public health or behavioral health. So thank you for putting in that measure in terms of the infrastructure for technology, electronic health record, electronic health, electronic medical records. It's very key.
And that's mandated, right? I mean, that's important. That is very key to making sure that this works, right?
Absolutely, it is, very key. Thank you.
And then, Mr. Chair, just, just noting again, based on the discussions, because I know that, that with the EITC savings, right? Guam will see that $65 million or more, that the government, we as policymakers can appropriate. This bill will take the $35 million out of the 65 million as an initial payment. Then each year, the government of Guam will appropriate 35 million for a total of 39, 29 years. And I know that the good director of DOO said that was, will round up to about $1 billion, $50 million. Am I right? If, if this, if this were to go through?
I, I don't think I said that.
Or somebody.
Deputy, deputy speaker.
Is, is that a correct analogy then? If I can ask the, the panel?
So we've, GIDEA has put, floated that $1 billion number just as a placeholder. And that would include infrastructure. But again, that total cost should be augmented by whatever federal grants are available to us.
Okay. So, so I just wanted to make sure that we, we, as we look at the course, that this, so that that amount is a placeholder. And then that the estimates coming out of the Army Corps report states that it would cost to build a new hospital alone is at $741 million. Am I right? So then, you then add the DPHSS, the Department of Public Health and Social Services, as well as the behavioral health and the maintenance for the facility, the equipment, technology, and financing costs. I, I, I want to ask the panel members, do you think that this is viable for our people of Guam and the government of Guam as well as the private entity to, to buy into as we look at this process moving forward?
I think everybody here on the panel is saying yes because we are taking care of our healthcare facilities to provide the needs of our people for the, the next century. So we definitely feel the investment is worth, worth it at this point.
Thank you very much. And thank you very much, Mr. Chair, for letting me ask those questions. But more importantly, thank you for giving me the co-sponsorship of this bill. Senator Maus.
Thank you, Madam Vice. Senator Brown, do you have any questions or comments for the panel?
Gosh, it wouldn't be a beautiful day in the neighborhood if I didn't, I think, right? You know, I'm gonna take a different approach here. You know, I hear the chorus about how wonderful an idea this is and how great we can pursue financing and bond financing. Granted, it is a process in place that we've taken advantage of on a number of occasions and certainly can do here as well. But I've also been around here long enough, many a day on the floor of the session hall, having to address borrowing funds to pay for GMH. I've been aware of times when the government of Guam has, you know, almost been down to just a few dollars to make sure it makes payroll at GMH. Not too long ago, seeing that there were still issues with regards to the equipment, the aging of the equipment, the issue of, you know, we don't have the enough funds to address the quality of personnel that we need at the hospital. And we're also in a very interesting time because I don't know yet, I don't know yet, where our economy is going to be in the near future. And while we have a time of plenty right now, you know, all to the goodness of our dear Uncle Sam. Uncle Sam, dear Uncle Sam, please come back to Guam. I don't know that this is the world we're gonna be in five months from now, six months from now. I don't know what the ramifications are gonna be in a couple months when these funds right now to our unemployed stop. What I am gauging, at least what I'm looking at, is I don't think we're gonna have a tourism industry that's going to bounce back quickly enough to absorb the government that we have on top of the additional costs that we're looking at adding to our taxpayers and our ratepayers out there in our community. I don't think anyone here is gonna argue against the desire to have a brand-new hospital. Having new things are wonderful. You know, it's like going and buying that brand-new shiny car when you build your house for the very first time and having a new home. It's, it's just something extra special with that. But that's where my concern is. I understand the mechanisms are here to finance, and I appreciate the information about the fact that the rates are low because of our current world situation. I just don't have a comfort level at this point, making these enormously large decisions at a time when I don't know where we're going to be. And, and you can argue certainly, when do we ever know? Things can happen so quickly. Look at the Korean situation. I mean, go down a list of things that could happen, you know, that can shift our, our little canoe out in the water. But that's where my reservation is at this moment, at this moment in time, because I don't know where we're gonna be. And certainly coming, we're hoping we're coming out of this pandemic, hoping. You know, it certainly showed the importance of healthcare and certainly, Ms. Vasadas, all the work that you, public health, everyone that has contributed to, to getting our community back on track and saving and helping as many people as you have and the desire to continue to do that. You know, it, it's something we recognize, and it doesn't diminish that at all. But that's where my concern comes from. We're making one of the biggest financial decisions in the history of the government of Guam, at least in the modern time of our government, since we had what we call our government since the early 1970s, at a time when we have an undetermined question in our minds of where are we? We are existing, as I've repeatedly said at almost every budget hearing, Mr. Chair, in an artificial economy. Yes, we can boast, oh, look at our revenues, we got more revenue. Yes, we do, but we have revenues because we have an enormous amount of, what? $2 billion of federal funds coming into Guam that are sustaining us. Certainly those of us that have worked for the government of Guam, retired from the government of Guam, we haven't lost a paycheck. But I think those other realities and dynamics are out there, are undefined at this moment. You know, if this bill proceeds, I, you know, I, I, it doesn't eliminate those questions and concerns and our ability to pay this money back. 35 million, oh, hey, EITC, we don't have to pay it. Let's just chip away at that. That'll be the annual payment with the assumption that the world will be stabilized and we're just gonna, you know, we're gonna trot on our merry way. And so that's a concern I have with regards to moving this project at this time. Maybe a year from now, two years from now, if we have a sense that our economy's back on track, our people are working, there's some sense of normalcy. You know, right now, I envy a typhoon. Getting, surviving a typhoon is minor compared to what we are going through now and the impact that it has had on our economy and on our private sector and many of the people that have lost their jobs or have, you know, lost their hours. And thank goodness, yes, we're able to benefit from these federal resources. But I think we need to acknowledge that that's not real. And it has a timeline. And a timeline, at least from all indications from our congressman's, you know, presentation to us a couple of days ago, is that that timeline is coming to an end. So I think we need to be mindful with that. I mean, I, you know, I'd love to have a state-of-the-art, a healthcare of excellence. But I'm also looking at the practical realities of what it is can our people afford? When we have yet historically, yet to demonstrate that we're able to capability, capability, you know, we have the capability to do it and do it consistently. Unless all these problems have magically disappeared. Unless all the equipment right now at GMH is current. Unless you have all the medical personnel that you need. Unless you have all the medicines that you need to take care of people. So I don't know how we jump from that to this ideal perfected existence because we're building a new facility. And now, not only do we need to build a new facility, we need to build a new facility all adjacent to each other. Everyone's been, you know, lauding the importance of remote capabilities now as a result of this pandemic about the fact that we don't even need to physically be in the same space because we have the technology to all be together in, you know, in virtual space. But now, oh, no, the buildings have to be next to each other. I mean, to the director of mental health, I mean, if your building's 20 years old, you know, that, that to me is not considered old for a building. Most of us have a 30-year mortgage. I'm still paying mine. I think this expectation, every 30 to 40 years, we're just gonna build a new building and, you know. There's so many other departments in the government of Guam that don't even have a building. Let's start the list. It's a long list that we're paying an enormous amount of lease money to include GIDEA, right? GIDEA leases and all the other Guam agencies that are located in the same building. GCIC and other locations here that our government agencies leased to include the Department of Revenue and Taxation. Don't even have their own home. And these are permanent structures in our government that we believe are, you know, they're gonna be around. We need to, if we keep our, our government as it is, obviously, these are permanent, long-term facilities, they're gonna need to exist. But they don't even have a home. So I see the rush and desire in the, oh, gosh, we want to build this. I love the title, whoever came up with this, you know, they deserve their paycheck. Center of excellence. It sounds great. Then I'm gonna want to know who, how do we address, not just the physical building, how do we address the equipment? How do we address the staffing? How do we address the medication? I mean, we've seen with the JFK project, and I have a little familiarity with the JFK project and the construction. You know, it's possible. We, we've shown it. We've shown it, it can happen. I mean, it's like walking into an auto dealership, and I want the most expensive car you have because it's the best. Can the people of Guam afford the best? Of course, we want to give them the best, or we want them to believe we're giving them the best. But in all reality, is this economy going to be able to generate the amount of money that we're talking about that we're going to need? Because this is automatic, 35 million dollars off the table. And the only thing we've been successfully able to do consistently as a government is ensure that debt service gets paid before anything else does, because we don't want to jeopardize our ability in the future to be able to go on the bond market and borrow money. It's one of the reasons, I think, you know, as Gita knows, Guam has a good reputation. We can't sell enough bonds. At least, that's been my experience. They want to buy more than we have to offer, and that's wonderful. But again, I think, you know, and Mr. Chair, as we go through the next round, I certainly can ask specific issues about what's contained in this bill, because there's a few other issues that I do have concerns that I want to discuss. But I just think moving forward at this point, I think we need to be mindful of that, and that's where my reservation is. I'm a little more conservative in this issue because of the unknown. And if in a couple of months, we have people that are unemployed and we can't give them jobs because the jobs aren't there yet, you know, our economy hasn't rebuilt to a level for them to be employed, what are we going to do? We're going to add to our list of members of our community that are on social welfare and are not in a position to contribute into the economy. Money doesn't come from nowhere. We know that. It has to be generated. And we're just not there. In my view, in my mind, from what I see and from my many, many, unfortunately, some of us have had, just by virtue of time and age, many years at this game, I just think it's a moment we need to pause. Because while we want to give our people all of this, I don't know that they can afford it at this point. And to take what is almost the single largest, single largest project to construct in the history of this government during this time, this time of uncertainty, because, I mean, we can call it what we can try to highlight, and everything's wonderful with the world, our finances, oh, everything, gosh, we should be dancing. I don't see it. And I'm very curious in the next couple of months, when that money starts drying up, especially if people didn't put some of that aside to get them through the next few months into the end of the year or into early next year, what those implications are going to be. Because right now, I'm sure when people want to make sure they have a roof overhead and food on the table, you know, we're going to be offering them the center of excellence, you know, we're going to be build it within the next five years or six years or whatever it may be. I don't think that's going to be comforting enough when there's some really pressing realities. And what if the revenues drop as a result of that? I think that possibility is very real. And that doesn't include existing obligations that we already have to take care of. So, Mr. Chair, I just think we need to be mindful of that moving forward. I mean, perhaps some of my colleagues have already decided, oh, we're going to vote for this bill and going to go down this road. But I think we need to pause with some reservation with regards to what we're doing and making this large decision at a time when there's so much that's unsure of, especially with regards to our economy and our current situation. Thank you very much. I'll ask my other questions on your next round.
Thank you. Senator Clinton, Bridge out. Do you have any questions, sir, or any comments?
Yes, just one question, but also before that question, I'd like to make a motion to add another round of questions, so a third round of questions. I understand some colleagues have more questions to ask, so I'd like to.
Are there any objections on adding a third round? I see no objection, so so be it. We will have a third round of, after, we're on the first round, Senator Tello. After this, we'll have two more rounds. Okay? Senator Clinton, do you have any questions?
So right now, the idea is, my understanding is that the hope is there that 300 million, I guess this question could be for Mr. Byrne or anyone else in the panel, really. So my understanding is that 300, we're hoping that 300 million from the A R P can be used to help fund the construction of this health campus, right? And then the rest of it be financed through the leaseback mechanism that's specified in this bill. My question is, if for some reason the federal government determines that none of the A R P funding can be used for the construction of this healthcare facility, would we be able to lease the entire healthcare facility through, excuse me, finance the construction of the entire healthcare facility through the leaseback mechanism that's in this bill?
I believe that the federal government can't afford for us to fail, so I'm very hopeful that they will allow us to use American Rescue Plan funds. But again, we would have to work with the legislature, because if we had to finance the 1, 1 million, 1 billion, then we would have to come back and ask for additional commitments. But at this point, we are, we are very optimistic that we will be able to use the funds and we will be able to secure additional grants, as well as top it off with the lease financing.
Okay. So is that because this bill only authorizes 700-some million worth of leaseback financing?
35 million a year. And so how the borrowing, the amount of project funds will depend on what the interest rate we are able to secure. But we believe that if we had to secure the whole 35 mil, we would be able to put project, deposit into the project fund anywhere from 5, from 500 million up to 500 million in projects if we had to do that today.
Okay. So a lot of the hope is really that A R P is allowed to be used to pay for some of the financing of the construction of this.
I'm sorry, say that again.
So really, the hope, a lot of this hinges on whether or not A R P is approved?
Absolutely. A R P or federal grants. Because again, we're still working with our partners to ensure, ensure that we're able to, again, have an economic recovery on on our side of the fence as well.
So there are some other potential federal grants aside from A R P that could fund this? Can you give some examples?
Absolutely. As mentioned earlier, Department of Interior has had actively been providing grants to our compact impact countries, and so that's one door that we'll be knocking on. We'll definitely be working with Department of Defense, because again, this is something that they will, you know, hopefully, we can get their support, as well as, you know, energy grants, I T grants. I mean, these are all things that, you know, as we start hard putting down some hard facts, we will be able to start knocking on those doors.
So D O D, you mentioned D O D. Is that with regards to the military buildup, sort of increasing the population of Guam as has been outlined in their environmental impact statements, how it'll increase the, increase the, increase the burden on our healthcare system due to the buildup? So is that the idea to also ask D O D to help leverage for federal funds? Is that what you meant?
Absolutely. I think D O D understands that the health of the of the island of Guam, the total health, will also help support their success. So they've definitely shown that they've been good partners with us, and so we're going to continue to work with them to to make sure that the Guam healthcare system is, health issues are addressed. Because there is that increase in population, there's that impact on infrastructure. So so again, they, they, their investment should also be be supported by sound investments on on the local side.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions at this time, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Clinton. Senator Peter, do you have any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And I know that we have shared this particular issue at length. And I just wanted to, because, you know, the governor mentioned that she is going to commit 300 million out of the 600 million that that is coming to us, I would say. And the estimated for the hospital is about 743 million. And 743 billion out of the 600 million, we're going to have like 443 million left over, right? Am I correct on that one? So what I wanted to find out is, what would be the cost for the the two health centers that were anticipating to be financed partly on the American Rescue Plan? How much are we going to use for the two, the two health centers? How much are we planning on getting out of the 600 million? Because by the time we, by the time the 300 million that is committed, that is going to be committed for the hospital, we're going to have like 443 million left out of that. So how much are we going, or do we anticipate, anticipate to use for the the two public health centers?
So that's something that the governor has asked Gita to put together to identify the, what they call the delta, the difference between what we can pull together and the need. So that difference is kind of what we're trying to secure with our federal partners. And and again, once we have our, our plan together, we should be able to come closer to, come closer to bringing that healthcare center to reality. And again, they've been very supportive in the past with, especially, they're making this huge 1 billion, 1 billion dollar investment on the military side. And, you know, they're have, they're still in discussions with us about supporting the local economies. So so I think, you know, again, showing that the legislature and the government is committed to put in this 35 million dollar annual funding, as well as the governor's commitment or her intent to set aside the 300. So this shortfall is where we want to work with them. Again, they've offered the support, the Army Corps of Engineers, and so they have that report already in hand that just the hospital itself is going to cost 763 million. And then we've added the increase in costs as well. So we hope to have a good results going forward. But but again, they they like to hear that, again, whether, you know, the the old adage of having one voice, you know, having the support of the legislature through a lease financing and this commitment, we'll then bring them to the table to say, okay, you've shown us your plan, let's see how we can help.
When I was actually conferring with the Chairman, and this bill had mentioned that we're going to be paying 35 million a year out of the E I T C money that we anticipate to get, like 60 million a year and over. So I figured that for the public health that is, we haven't come out with a number, an amount for the two public health, two centers. So I figured the rest, the money that will be committed to the two pub, health centers would be, would be coming out from a loan. Am I right? And that we will be paying that loan, 35 million out of the 60-some million that we'll be getting on the E I T C. Am I right? So up to this point in time, do we have a guess number for the two public health center that we're going to use some of the money from the American Rescue Plan?
As, as we had mentioned earlier, we are, we're working on those studies right now. And we've just put the 100 million as placeholders, because with the hospital costing 763 million and based on our recent experience in financing projects, we've seen that construction costs have gone up. So so again, these are placeholders for this type of facility. So so that's kind of what we're, how we put our projects listing together.
And the reason, the reason I ask for that, because there's going to be like 443 million left over from the, from the 300 million out of the 600 million that that is being given to us, right? So 443 million would be left over. So what I'm trying to find out is, how much of that 433 million that we need to get out from, from that money to to support the the two health centers that we anticipate to
So the, what we've said is, with the 35 mil, we could borrow up to 500 mil. And then with the governor's commitment of, not commitment, with her statement of providing up to 300 million, so that's 800 million. We believe that the difference there is, if we're looking at a billion dollars, the difference would be at least 200 million of where we're going to have to be creative in identifying. And so again, whether it's energy grants, I T grants, Department of Interior grants, Department of Defense grant, our shortfall today is roughly about 200 to 300 million.
Yeah. The only reason why I ask for that is because several weeks ago, we submitted the the financial needs for the different communities, if you will, the different government of Guam agencies. And I know that's going to go up in the millions. And I wanted to be sure that we don't want to commit those million dollars for the different agencies without acknowledging to satisfy what we want to build, what we want to use for the two health centers. And that's, that's all that I wanted to know. Because I think that it's high time that we, we expand our health centers. And I want to thank the, my cousin, the administrator of the hospital for really doing a good job. And I want to thank the the panel for, for sharing these thoughts with with all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Tullio. Senator Blas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And appreciate the discussions that have been going on. Is it very safe to assume now that we now know definitively that the governor intends to use 300 billion dollars from the 664 million A R P funding that we received for the construction of a healthcare facility?
Senator, the the total of the A R P funds is about 604 million.
Okay, 604 million. So the 604 million dollars, the governor, is it safe? So now we can say that 300 million dollars she intends to use for the?
That's what the governor has.
So what we're saying now is that there's obviously now a plan to be able to use how she's going to spend the 604 million dollars.
Yeah, that's what the governor has said, that 300 million.
Okay. Because, you know, this body's been waiting to find out where, how the money is going to be spent. Thank you very much for being able to explain to us where 300 million dollars is going to go to. We just want to know where the next 304 million dollars is going to be spent. So is it safe to assume now that we're now going to have to wait into the middle of July for the guidance on how to spend the 604 million dollars before the, it's going to be released? It's been now, in this meeting, in this hearing, it's been released.
Yes, you're right.
Okay, thank you.
The the guidance, the.
That's been released.
We received interim rules.
Okay. So so basically, it is, so we don't have to wait to the middle part of July to find out how the rest of the money is going to be spent?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you, that was great. Um, Art, okay? And Therese, I'll give you guys a chance to speak. Okay? Um, for the three, all right? I'm sure you've done your own assessment or your own studies individually, and maybe I can start with Therese and Ms. Ario at the end. How much do you need, or how much do you anticipate that your, the facilities that you want is gonna cost?
Well, we're, we're still working that out. We're determining, um, the square footage.
Mm-hmm.
But we began preliminary discussions with GITA at a hundred million.
Hundred million?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But we, we, we anticipate that going down as we determine what services will stay in Timuining and what services should be at the campus, uh, for obvious reasons, for better collaboration with the other two healthcare departments.
Okay, so...
So, but our starting number was a hundred million. And that's the discussion we had with GITA.
Okay, so a hundred million.
That would be the high.
The high. So can we, okay, let's, let's, let's do this. We'll put it at eighty then. How about eighty? We'll start at eighty, right? Yeah?
Sure.
Sure, thanks. Art?
Senator, good afternoon. I don't have an amount. We're still working. We have our floor's, uh, footage, and we've worked that presentation through and those documents through, but we have yet to sit with, uh, we're also working with, uh, Gora for a concept, but also with, uh, GITA. We need to further discuss this with them and present our, um, services that will be in the facility. So, uh, there was a shift, and so the shift initially, it was GMH, and now Public Health is at the forefront for the project. So we're hope, we're hoping that the shift continues and that Public Health and Social Services be the first project that would be built at the site. And so, uh, we are now revisiting all our requirements, uh, even as recent as this week we're talking about. Within the management of public health, the leadership, is there anything else that we've overlooked? Because we're moving, you know, quicker on ours than we had anticipated, but I do need to have that meeting with, uh, GITA and the other partners to determine actual or projected costs, Senator.
So what is your projection right now, ballpark figure, conservative figure, discussion figure?
Well, with just the lab alone, uh, the public health lab that we're looking at's like about forty-two million, and the size we're building probably without the public health lab, because that's, uh, going to be a DoD finance project. I would probably stay conservatively right now without any discussions with those that actually estimate square footage for a building of this type. I would probably say we'd stay with a hundred million just to be on the safe side, because I really don't have any numbers, Senator.
Okay.
What we were advised is that the property that we're using, that would be allocated to public health, would be able to be multiplied four times. So Central Public Health is about seventy-five thousand square feet. So we were to build two structures, each at a hundred and fifty thousand each, uh, so that'd be like three hundred thousand square feet. The proposed square footage right now for public health, estimated based on our presentation, is just a little over two hundred and eighty thousand square feet.
Okay.
But that includes the lab, and so the lab will be subtracted from that.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't have an exact number at this time, or a projected number, Senator.
Okay, thanks. Ms. Vell, Spasades, hi. What is your, okay, and I, I guess we discussed it, but for the purposes of my discussion here, how much, what's your facility gonna cost?
Well, as it was estimated by the Army Corps of Engineer when they did the assessment on the hospital, factoring everything such as building codes, hospital codes, fire safety, life safety, oxygen in the rooms, all of that, it's, you know, it's a very complex, uh, building that we were looking to build, and so the estimation is seven hundred and forty-three million dollars. But again, we also need to figure out how many beds.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we haven't yet come to that conclusion because we're still doing our assessment. So, you know, it, it depends on the number of beds, also on the types of medical services that the doctors, and we've done, we're doing a, a survey right now with the doctors, what they would like to see in the hospitals, such as an MRI, because right now we don't have an MRI. So all those other diagnostic types of, uh, services that we need to factor in, you know, I'm just gonna go with the estimate for now, what the Army Corps gave us, seven hundred and forty-three million, but again, it could change.
Okay. Um, and, you know, um, Ms. Spasades, you had, you had mentioned earlier that, okay, the preferred site or the site that you were all looking at is a hundred and two acres, the, basically was commonly known as Eagles Field, first off. How's your husband feel about that? That's a... Eagles Field, right? I, you remember, King? He used to coach me on that field, remember? Um, so a hundred and two acres, uh, but you said it's DoD property, but what caught my interest in the conversation, what you're saying, is that we're, we don't know whether we're gonna be able to get it outright or we have to lease it. It's gonna be leased to us.
Hmm.
That's part of the discussion, isn't it?
Senator, is that question for me?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I didn't really quite understand the question.
Well, in, in your discussion, in, but what you said about the, I don't know whether it's you or Tina, because I'm, you know, when I take off my glasses, I can't tell who's talking. Um, there was a, the discussion of the DoD property, okay? The Minilau property, and we're assuming, a hundred and two acres.
A hundred and two acres.
And there's a, you said that there was a discussion about whether or not DoD is going to outright give it to us, or we're gonna have to lease it.
Okay.
Is that, is that right?
Well, that's what's going on right now at the governor's level.
Yeah.
I'm not a part of that discussion.
So do we anticipate, or do we know what in as far as a lease amount would be on that?
Uh, I...
So, so we can anticipate that there's probably gonna be a, if there is, there's gonna be a lease amount, right?
My understanding that that may be the quickest way that the military can hand over to the government of Guam, is some kind of a lease, a lease agreement.
Okay. And I'm asking these questions, guys, so that I can get, basically get a, a figure as to what we're talking about here, okay?
Okay.
Um, because the other thing too that we talked about, and thank you, Tina, because you brought this up too, and you said that the Army Corps of Engineers, or you're looking at, uh, working with, uh, Department of Transportation or Highway Safety or Highway, because obviously if we're gonna put it up at Eagles Field, at this Minilau site, first off, it's only a three-lane highway, just, actually, it's a three-lane highway made on, on two-way, okay, for, 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 for two lanes only. There's gonna obviously need infrastructure upgrades, not just on the road, but also the water, the power, the sewer and everything.
Correct.
Which may cause, because if I remember correctly, um, there's not enough land, when we're gonna have to probably purchase or condemn land. Is that true? If we're gonna put it up there? And if that be the case, have we factored in how much we're gonna have to put in if we're gonna have to condemn land or purchase land to be able to put in this infrastruc, these, these upgrades?
Mm-hmm.
So that probably is gonna cost us a few more million?
There's gonna be a cost, definitely. The, uh, third subcommittee of this task force, which is the land, infrastructure and facilities, that's being led by Mr. Joe Borja, Director of Land Management. He is going to be submitting a report, uh, in about a week or two, including all of those factors in terms of the infrastructure, the utilities, the road, what needs to then be in place if that, you know, we're gonna build the hospital there, I mean, the campus there. Absolutely.
Okay, so I'm, I, I, I'm not gonna even try to estimate, guesstimate a conservative figure on what that, what that cost is gonna be, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Don't worry, I'm almost getting there, sir. Um, so, right now, we're looking at, just based on what you've, what you provided for figures on what facilities, nine hundred and twenty-three million dollars. And this bill's for seven hundred and forty. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Senator Titeguy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much, and, uh, thank you to the panel. It's been a long afternoon, I know, so this is one round. Try and make mine as, as short as possible, and I, I greatly appreciate GITA for always including me in the task force to making those meetings. I've made all your meetings and the different subcommittee meetings too, to, to know what's going on. And my, uh, colleagues actually ask great questions. In fact, uh, Mr. Chair, yourself, um, asking one of the questions that are, that needs to be addressed, and that was regarding the federal funding through DoD. And I believe it was, uh, I'm not mistaken, yeah, it's Public Law 111, and this, Mr. Burns, I think, uh, you might be familiar with it, Section 2824 of U.S. Public Law, 111380, uh, that was dated on January seventh, twenty-eleven. And this basically is from the Department of Interior that by May, during May twenty-eleven, um, there should have been efforts by the government of Guam regarding the impact of the military buildup. So my colleague, uh, this chairman, uh, acting chairman, asked that question, but my question would be, Mr. Burns, is, um, what efforts are being made right now to incorporate the data that was needed to DoD, uh, to, you know, implement or show them the impact? Uh, what is the status?
Senator, as Ms. Garcia said, there are lots of possibilities and probabilities for funding for this particular project. I, I'm not aware of any specific, uh, approaches that have been made, but I know there have been discussions, um, and I, and I believe there's going to be, um, a, a consolidated approach to a number of agencies, DOI, Veterans Affairs, DoD, uh, to seek for, uh, additional funding for this, for the particular contributions that are going to be made, uh, on behalf of these agencies, for, for the services that are going to be provided for, for their, um, the people that they look after, you know, the, the Compact Impact people, uh, the DoD dependents, all these people are going to rely upon these services to an extent. So I know there's going to be some approach to that, but I think all that is still being contemplated and formulated.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. I think, um, I, I understand, you know, this is, um, something that happened before your time in, to the administrat, well, the last administration, but if you could please, uh, look into Public Law, like I said, 111-383. In fact, it was the former Assistant Secretary, Tony Babauta, that signed the letter to put these, um, uh, data together, put the data together to provide to DOA, and nothing at this point has, uh, come of it, but it's a different thing that we're talking about here. Um, I know what you're trying to do, you know what's moving forward now, but this is very, very important, and we still have not received anything from, uh, DOI regarding this. So if you could look into that, I appreciate it. I also greatly appreciate that the...
Yes, ma'am.
You're very welcome. And I also greatly appreciate, um, the task force in recognizing the work of our former colleague, Senator Dennis Rodriguez, with the two hundred and eighty-three page report that provided a lot of the input, um, into the task force that was, basically guided you through it, and, uh, appreciate you looking into that. And yes, you're right, Tina, you know, it's been years of research and data, and that is very, um, helpful. Um, I'm gonna go from the one end and, uh, the other end with the, uh, Guam Behavioral Wellness. Okay, in, I'm looking at this right here, um, it's a PowerPoint presentation, okay, so I'm gonna refer to this quite a bit. And in the PowerPoint presentation, there's a section there from, uh...
Who's PowerPoint? I'm sorry, Senator.
I'm sorry? Can, can you see it? It was a PowerPoint presentation that was provided to the task force. Yes, Tina has one, so, um, Ms. Ariel, Therese. Okay. And it's, it's just very simple, because it says here that you plan on, uh, the second page where it says Guam Behavioral Wellness Center, main offices and key support service to be moved to Minilau, existing building to remain for housing clients as needed. The, the concern I have here is that, if I'm not mistaken, it's important to have the clients near a hospital, uh, for any reasons, emergency reasons and as such. So why would you move, keep the clients in Timuining and the potential new hospital? Can you explain?
Um, I'll explain. Not necessarily, Senator. It has been, it's not a hundred percent certain, but my internal meetings have determined that outpatient services from drug and alcohol for new beginnings will remain in Timuining, and therefore, clients doesn't necessarily mean all the clien, we have many clients, most of which are outpatients. Um, I think the clients that you're referring to are inpatient units, which will be in Minilau. Those units have to be close, close to, that's, those units will be not in Timuining, but be moved. So that's the difference.
Yep, thank you, Chech. That, that's all I needed to know, because I was concerned. I mean, I know that they need to be near the hospital, so that's good. Um, and I, and I know that a hundred thousand is quite a bit of funding, especially with the new Timuining, I mean, not the, the building that you have right now in Timuining, which is a very nice building and, and big, so it's, when my colleague said eighty thousand, I'm sure he kind of shrugged and said no, but maybe we can look at, um, being a little bit more conservative on that end, because my next question goes to public health. And with an agency that would have so, so many departments, uh, you're very close to what Reven Tax has to deal with, but your agency is huge, a hundred thousand dollars, um, can you tell me right now if the intent of having this medical campus incorporating yourself, is it still the governor's pri, well, not still, but I've heard that if there's any one of these three structures, the hospital, uh, behavioral wellness, and public health, that public health will have priority on the first building being built?
That is my understanding, Senator Titeguy, I'm sorry. Therese always jokes to me that I'm homeless, so, um, she goes, yes, you're, you're the homeless one, so get out there and tell them you're homeless. It's like...
Hey, Lil, I'm looking at you too, Lillian, because we know that public health doesn't have a home right now, and they're being spread out everywhere, so...
Oh, no.
Is that your interpretation?
I yield to public health, let them go first. That's the first phase.
Well, that's good to hear, because I have a funny feeling it's gonna be more than a hundred thousand if it is the first initial. So going to GITA, my concern here is the RFP that's going out. I hope that it's done in phases, that the RFP that's gonna provided, um, will be in that type of phase, phase-in approach, more than a one-time deal, even though it's, I, you know, it's, of course, it's an ideal situation. But, um, so, GITA, your, your thoughts on that, on making it a phase-in approach on an RFP to provide?
Well, again, we will tell the, the, you know, our intent is to have the developer, yes, complete public health first, but not to hold back on GMH.
Okay.
But yes, it, it, we would be, um, um, our goal is to get public health started first, and then, you know, at the same time, get it all done, because again, our, our intent is to have all the funds, um, in the bank so that it can go move simultaneously.
Okay, and then, um, because of the, you know, the study, um, and the feasibility study, this is going to Steve from BBMR, I mean, uh, Office of Finance and Budget. It says that a million dollars is gonna come from the general fund. If this bill was passed, where we, um, I just got the microphone.
Your, your five minutes are up, the, I've been advised.
Really?
Yes.
Everybody else was longer. Oh, my God.
But we have two more rounds, Senator Tullai.
No, give me, give me, just give me, just one more thing, King. Can I have this?
We'll give you one out of five.
I haven't even touched Lillian yet. And she's like, thank God, Tullai's not gonna go my route yet, no. Lil, it's all gonna be you next round, but Steve, it says one million dollars, it says from the general fund. Where are we gonna get this one million dollars? Where is it gonna come from? Is it gonna come from somewhere in our budget? Or, or Mr. Burnt, does the governor have a, uh, she has transfer authority? Can she actually, um, fund this one million dollar for the feasibility study? And thirdly, to GITA, I know that I, I, I went to GITA to ask them for a feasibility study, funding that came from the SIDS, uh, grant. So where is this one million dollars gonna come from for this feasibility study? Can someone on the panel tell me?
Someone will answer that. Senator Tullai, but that's your last question.
Aww.
Mr. Burnt, or Steve, or Tina can answer that.
This someone will, will try and start to answer it. Um, you know, this is an appropriation, Senator, from this bill. The governor, um, follows the bill, so if, if the, the, the bill, when it becomes law, appropriates a million dollars, she has a choice. Either, um, she can appropriate it from a, a excess of revenue, should that, that, should that actually occur, or she can appropriate it from her transfer authority, uh, should that not occur. But we're not there yet, so we don't know. But I don't think it's any different, Senator, from any other appropriation in any other bill, that, uh, until the revenues actually occur, no one can really state where they're coming from. that, uh, until the revenues actually occur, no one can really state where they're coming from.
Okay, thank you, Tina. Is that money still available at GIDEA where we found from the, the SIDS, the 1 million?
Um, yeah, I'm, I don't know where the 1 mil will come from. That would be up to the body.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I'm sorry. I was saying, I don't know where the 1 mil comes from.
Go like this, go like this. Go, pull your mask a little bit out so I can hear. Okay.
Um, I don't know where the 1 mil will come from.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I believe if Melanie might direct that 1 million from what we found in another grant that was issued out earlier, uh, last year. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. My colleagues, we have completed the first round. Please be mindful, we'll have two more rounds to go. So we'll work with that. Senator Moynihan, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Considering we're starting the second round, I, and the time of day, I recommend that we recess tomorrow, till tomorrow at 10 o'clock, as long as I get to ask my question first tomorrow.
All right, thank you, Senator Moynihan. We'll recess till tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock.